Testing, testing. Testing, testing. One second, you said? Hang on a second. Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Good.
Ah, they do that.
I didn't worry about it, I said right up front when I came over. That was especially inappropriate after this weekend.
That was for real.
Yeah, I was there.
Oh, really?
I was at the game. We had a great, we had a great tailgate. Ashley had Pete John in the little momma.
Oh, cool.
And it was ninety-two.
Not at the Holiday Inn.
Sure.
Nine thirty.
Oh, nine thirty? To one thirty?
One thirty.
Good morning, and welcome to the October fourteenth Lurie County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please rise with me as we salute the flag. We will be led this morning by Supervisor Worley, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Ready, salute.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's stand on nation of America in the civil, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Beceena. Our first item of business today is Board of Supervisor matters. As always, we will start with Supervisor Ennis.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Saturday, we had the annual 4-H Breakfast in Porterville, the fairgrounds, and what a turnout. I mean, thousands of people showed up, and it was, it was great to raise money for the 4-H programs throughout the area. Then we had Pioneer Days that came to town, and we had the Jackass Mail trying to shoot everybody up downtown Porterville. They had a big rib cook-off, and that was kind of a fun event. And then Saturday night, the Breakfast Rotary had their casino night at the fairgrounds, and so attended that, that was also another big turnout. So that was their big fundraiser for the year that helps the local charities and nonprofits. Yesterday, around noon, I had a meeting with the representatives from the Tulley Indian Reservation on some concerns, and we're trying to work more closely with them, and we'll be doing some announcements in the near future, hopefully. They did, they did do their veterans' building yesterday up there and got it red, had the ribbon, red ribbon ceremony and cut the ribbon and everything. And then, of course, we, they're gonna have their grand opening for their federal court the end of the month, I think around the twenty-ninth, and be going up there to that event. And then they also are building a new building for their elders up there, and that will be also opening up pretty quick. So a lot of things going on up there on the Indian Reservation. Friday night, I'll be attending the Tulare County Cattlemen's Dinner at Exter. That's always a good event, and they always come up with a cattleman and cattlewoman of the year, which is always good, and I try to be there to give out the certificates to them. So that's always a fun deal, and that way I get to wear my Wranglers and boots, which I'd like to, I'd like to wear all the time if I get away with it. Tomorrow, from one to three, we're gonna be having a Tulare County-wide water meeting in Porterville to discuss some kind of permanent way to hopefully look into the future for the water needs at Tulare County. And then from three to four, we'll be talking about East Porterville and trying to figure out a way to do a permanent water solution for that area. So a lot of stuff coming up, a lot of meetings, and staying kinda busy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ashida.
Last week, we had our annual supervisors' meeting held at Harris Ranch, and I'm proud to say that all five of our supervisors were in attendance. We've been known throughout the state that when there is a, there's a conference, that we participate in large numbers. Saturday, I had a chance to present a proclamation to Outside Creek School for its hundred-and-fiftieth year of existence. And I mentioned, you know, like, when you're on social security, a hundred doesn't look that far away. But when I thought about it later, is that my great-grandmother was three years old when that school was formed. So a hundred and fifty years is extremely a long time. So we're proud to have them still as an independent school district. Yesterday, we had our monthly Water Commission meeting, and the commissioners voted to send a letter of support to Washington, DC. The letter is supporting the Regional Supervisors Letter, which is against the new regulations for US waters. We also talked about having a joint meeting with the Kings County Water Commission, and that was a request of one of the supervisors in Kings County. So hopefully, next Water Commission meeting, it'll be a joint meeting between Kings and Tulare County Commissions. We also formed a committee to look at the Groundwater Management Act that was just passed. So we'll have all four of the watersheds that are in Tulare County will be represented on that committee. And we'll, we will also have two outside people from, one from the Farm Bureau and possibly one from the Ag Advisory Committee to join that subcommittee. And that's all I have. Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Worley.
Thank you, Chairman. I have, the, I thought the San Joaquin Valley Association Conference at Harris Ranch was one of the better ones that I've attended. And we had one person there under the umbrella of EDC, Economic Development, talking about a company that comes from Chile, which have a patented process for treating wastewater. And there is a facility apparently in Fireball, and it'd be very critical to see how the Regional Water Quality Control Board feels about this, because if it's successful, it's a very simplified type of system that involves rocks, wood shavings, and red worms. And, and water goes in, that's, the solid's taken out, and four hours later, the water's usable. So that would be a tremendous thing. And where it's been used a lot in Ecuador, or I'm sorry, in Chile, is in individual home sites. In other words, it's a simplified type of version. This could be used in exchange, and as, rather than having sewers or our, our system that we now have. This Thursday, at four-thirty at Traver School, there will be a step-up event. We have about twenty vendors that are going to be participating, and I especially want to thank our Tulare County Probation Department. They are the real driving force behind this particular event, and I thank them for their continued dedication to this. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Upper Kings River Water Authority Meeting. If you recall, we are on the list of this committee to receive a grant when the water, when Monday becomes available for doing flood projects up in, up in my district. And so we're, that's a very important thing for us to be a participant in. We just received the news that we received a CBDG grant for $2 million, and about a million and a half of that will be going to a sewer water project in, in Traver. And I'm gonna stop now, 'cause I have a lot of competition.
Supervisor, I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
I apologize for that. I asked staff to open that, because we do have a public hearing.
Yes.
Nine thirty, and we will see an influx of people.
I'm not gonna repeat myself. We're good. I'm done.
Okay, Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right.
Wait, 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 one more thing.
You missed your opportunity.
One last thing. Above the fold, on the sports page of Vice State Times Delta, Tulare County's finest, Dinuba High School, has beaten all of its counterparts in Tulare County. Our only one loss was to Hanford, and so five and one, and I think we've beaten every person up here on the Diocese team, except we don't play Strathmore or Lindsay, so we didn't play them, but other than that. That's it, now I'm done.
Go Hanford. All right. I'll just, real quick, say that the Relay for Life that Tulare had this last weekend was a highly successful event, very well attended, and they always do a great job putting that on. And so I thank all those who worked very hard, volunteered their time, and put together a fantastic event. This week, there's going to be a water roundtable hosted by the Tulare County Farm Bureau at their office on Thursday at four PM. I think that that is predominantly for representatives from each city and also from the county as well. And then this weekend, on Saturday, there's going to be a Deputy Sheriff's Association Golf Tournament at Valley Oaks Golf Course. That tournament starts at ten o'clock, if anyone is interested in participating. That's all I've got.
I've offered to be a caddy many times for that event. Let's see, last week's, on Saturday, I attended Tasty Arts Event, which was a very successful event. There were some seventy-plus artists from throughout the county who had set up shop on Garden Street in downtown Vicey, so a very successful event. We did have three artists participate in the Step-Up Art Contest, actually honoring Tulare County Office of Education and their mission, and a winner was selected. And the Office of Education, as we know, are building two new buildings, and they've offered to hang all three pieces of art, which are eight feet by eight feet. These are not small pieces at their new building. So we're pretty excited about that. This Wednesday is the Agriculture, Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee meeting. I'll be attending that in Tulare. On Thursday is the Consolidated Waste Management Authority meeting. I'll be attending that on Thursday. And then on Monday, as a reminder, TCAG will be in Woodlake. We'll be looking forward to being over in Supervisor Worley's district again for that event. And that's all I have. Next, we will turn the time over to Supervisor Ashida, who presented proclamation recognizing October 2014 as Italian Heritage Month.
Donna Griss, could you please join me? You know, yesterday, my wife was waiting for the mail. Well, the mail didn't come, because it was Columbus Day. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to present this proclamation recognizing October 2014 as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County. And I'm gonna read a couple of the wherasses. And it's been, it's hard to believe, it's been five centuries since Columbus discovered the New World. We learned that in school, but you look back, and I said a hundred and fifty years was a long time ago. But five centuries ago, he came and discovered the New World, which opened up a home for all of us. Whereas since that time, generations of Italian Americans have helped shape the, our society and steer the course of our history. And whereas the Sons of Italy, this is Enrico Caruso Lodge, was instituted in June nineteen-twenty-seven, and whereas founded on the principles of liberty, equality, and fraternity, its first mission was to help acclimate all Italian immigrants in the United States, helping them bond together, learn language, learn the language, and become citizens. Whereas today, the Sons of Italy support scholarships, charities, Italian language and culture. And whereas bound by enduring faith and family, Italian, excuse me, Italian Americans have flourished all over the areas of our public and economic life while we're serving their proud Italian traditions. Now therefore be resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize October 2014 as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County and encourages Tulare County residents to learn more about Italian history. So I want to turn this over to Donna, and you have a few words.
Thank you very much.
Let's hold this up and...
Thank you very much. We would like to thank the Tulare County Supervisors for recognizing October as Italian Heritage Month. Italians have contributed to the culture throughout the world. In ages past, we have scientists and mathematicians that have their roots in Italy. And many of us as Italian Americans work in agriculture. We work in the fields of law, education, and the family is all-important to us. And we hope that we continue to contribute to the county that has become the home for many of the immigrants from Italy. Many of us are first and second-generation Italians, and we value our American roots as well as our Italian roots. And we thank you and hope that you enjoy October. On the twenty-fifth, the Tulare County Museum, along with the Historical Society, will be setting up a display of agriculture in Tulare County honoring the Italians. And we hope that you will be able to come to that on the twenty-fifth and join with us and celebrate and share some Italian food, because, you know, Italians never let you go away hungry. Thank you.
Next, we'll have a request from Health and Human Services Agency to adopt a resolution proclaiming the week of October twenty-third to thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County. And I understand Adam Valencia has a short PowerPoint presentation you'd like to share. And then we'll turn the time over to Supervisor Vanderpool to present the proclamation.
Chairman, while the folks are leaving, I thought it was interesting that at the beginning of the reason for the Italian organization, it was to teach English, and now the purpose is to teach Italian. It just shows you what happens after people become Americanized. We, we tend to lose our, our roots.
Well, good morning, and thank you so much for the opportunity. It's, it's great to see you again. It's been actually a year later. This is our fifth year in really working this really hard with the Red Ribbon Week and celebration. Most importantly, I want to thank our partners. I want to thank our committee. I want to thank Dr. Dirksen from Health and Human Services on behalf of our Tulare County Office of Ed. It's just, it's awesome to be a part of something so great. Every year, it's just getting bigger and bigger. This committee, it consists of many, many community partners.
Pull the microphone up. The folks in the back can hear you.
Okay, better. Is that better?
Yes.
This, this particular committee consists of many of our partners, faith-based partners, law enforcement, all the serving agencies that are here throughout Tulare County and providing a lot of support for our students and really making this happen. When I look at caring adults, we have a lot of adults that are coming to the table for this really, really big event. As I start thinking about all the districts, just to kind of give you a little impact here, we have over a hundred and fifteen, which serves over six thousand students in our after-school programs here in Tulare County. And I'm proud to say that our after-school programs have adopted "Love Yourself, Be Happy, Healthy and Drug-Free", which is our national theme. And throughout the week of October twenty through the twenty-fourth, they'll be celebrating all kinds of activities, which would be next week, and really finalizing for the culminating event, which would be on that Saturday. When you look at the number of districts, forty-four school districts, that's over a hundred thousand students that will be impacted by this event. And again, it's the work of the committee. It's the partnerships that make this happen. Of course, your support is greatly appreciated. We are very excited this year, because every year it's getting bigger and bigger. Here's a little video that was put together by students, for students, for the, for the public to get a chance to kind of get a good glimpse of what has happened in the past.
Red Ribbon Week is a week that you can express yourself by not, like, saying that you don't do drugs and saying that you're drug-free and that it's okay to be drug-free.
More or less about making good decisions, because they can affect your future.
Drugs, they're not really the answer. You can, you can tell your friends anything, even if you think you can't. You can tell other people's friends anything. Anybody will listen to you. You don't need drugs.
It's helped me, because I'm learning how to be a leader and more successful, and to, like, not use drugs.
Join us for the Fifth Annual Red Ribbon Week Celebration on October twenty-fifth, from noon to four PM. The event will include live entertainment from local talents, special guest speakers, and student performances. Community resources will also be available at the Fifth Annual Red Ribbon Week Celebration, including information on health and safety, hands-on activities for youth, and fun for the entire family. Lunch will be provided to the first six hundred guests. We hope you and your friends and family will join us at the Tulare Agri Center in Building C on October twenty-fifth, from noon to four PM, to celebrate Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County.
This year, the, the group has obviously voted on looking at the national theme, and "Love Yourself, Be Happy, Healthy, and Drug-Free". And so you're gonna start to see a lot of T-shirts and a lot of different things going around with this particular logo and slogan for the year. And so we felt that it was very appropriate for us to be consistent across all programs. This right here is the invitation. In fact, each of you have received an invitation, a specialized invitation, also with a nice T-shirt. Hopefully, it'll work for you. They came out really, really nice. Again, our committee put together a really great event last year and the years before that, and we're anticipating probably over two thousand plus this year. Last year, I'd say we were probably maybe twelve-hundred, thirteen-hundred. I'd say maybe even more than that. We have commitments from all of our after-school sites that are associated with Tulare County Office of Ed. And again, that's over thirty-four sites. But when you look at the number of students that we're serving throughout the county, it's gonna be a great event. I know that it's really important to really acknowledge all the work that our committee has done, and I want to have them stand up really quickly. They would, please stand up, because they're all here. Again, you can't do this work without a committee. That means they're the ones that are gonna make it happen the day of the event, so I want to give them a round of applause. And again, Dr. Dirksen, we certainly appreciate all your support. Health and Human Services is a wonderful partner, and we've been doing this for some time now, and just to continue to do the good work. Again, we can't do this without your support. We really appreciate the time this morning, and thank you.
While Supervisor Vanderpool makes his way here to present you a proclamation, Adam, question for you. I noticed when I arrived last year, I saw loot buses stacked up one after the other. Are you gonna be able to utilize our loot buses?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, that's, the committee, we'll take that back to the committee. We also have some commitments from each of the school districts to provide transportation as well, and so, yeah, it's gonna be jam-packed. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
And while Adam's making his way over here, just make sure you're one of the first six hundred, otherwise you don't get to eat.
That's right. You better make sure you're there.
We're expecting two thousand, but please be one of the first six hundred to make sure you get some lunch. Well, I'm very proud to present this proclamation to Adam Valencia on behalf of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors proclaiming Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in the nation have reached epidemic stages, and early substance abuse increases the likelihood of a person developing psychiatric disorders in his or her late twenties, I'm no longer there. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention and education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs and rates of past-year alcohol and illicit drug use, I'm sorry, and rates of past-year alcohol and illicit drug use were lower for youths who have seen or heard drug or alcohol prevention messages in the past year than youths who had not seen such prevention messages at school. And whereas teens are affected by the influences in their lives, family, neighborhood, school, and community. When parents, educators, law enforcement, faith-based organizations, and community members unite in opposing illicit drugs, young people are much less likely to engage in drug use. And whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in Tulare County and every community across the nation during the week of October twenty-third through thirty-first, 2014. And whereas to help achieve this goal, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the National Family Partnership, and Tulare County Department of Mental Health, Alcohol and Drug and Other Division unite or invite all residents of Tulare County to participate in Red Ribbon Week 2014. And now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of October twenty-third through thirty-first, 2014 as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County, and call upon the citizens, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Tulare County to recommit our community to increasing drug awareness and drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to being a drug-free state. Signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Phil Cox, Steve Worley, and Mike Ennis. And I'm actually wearing the red tie to celebrate Red Ribbon Week. I'm more spirited than you are, but not quite as spirited, because Kent McNatt right there in a red shirt. You know that, right? So anyways, real proud to present this to you. All right.
He's part of our committee.
I, I know, I figured as much. I mean, he's celebrating wearing that red shirt. Take care. Hope you have a very successful week. Thanks, Adam.
Our next item on today's agenda is item number four.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. That's an action item.
Oh, this is an action item. Excuse me.
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
By Vanderpool, second by Worley. Please cast your votes, and it is unanimous. Thank you for reminding me. Next item is a proclamation designated October nineteenth through October twenty-fifth as National Save for Retirement Week. We have a presentation by Rita Woodard and Denise England.
Good morning, Chair, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good to see you, and board members, Mr. Rousseau and Clinton Sims. We're here today to ask you to help make saving for retirement more public and help us bring some awareness about the importance of saving for retirement. We have all these drug-free Italians out here now, so we want them to plan for their retirement. It's a busy week here, I guess, a busy month for everybody. Denise Akins here is chairman of our education subcommittee for the Tulare County Defined Contribution Plan, and she has some words to say here.
Thank you.
So throughout the week for Save for Retirement Week, starting next week, we'll be sending out emails to employees to remind them and to make them more aware of the Defined Contribution Plan. And we have a very strong defined benefit plan, but as we all know, sometimes other needs arise, and so we also have a great Defined Contribution Plan. So I would like to play this little infomercial.
Important question. Will you have enough income to live comfortably in retirement? Or would you be singing the blues? Now, before you answer, consider this. Increasingly longer lifespans may require
So the audio on it played, but not the visual. So you'll have to wait for the email next week to see the full video as well. But we currently have two thousand one hundred and eight full-time employees participating in the program with assets just at eighty-one million dollars. So those folks will not be singing the retirement blues, and check your email next week for more announcements.
Give a politician a microphone, right? Having come from the private sector, I had never planned on having any type of retirement other than what I provided for myself. So whatever I had in the bank, whatever property I owned, whatever land I owned, that was to be my retirement. So until I came to the Board of Supervisors, going on ten years now, there was no really understanding of a defined plan for me. So I didn't really, you know, catch on to that for a while and maintain to have the attitude, whatever I save is what I will have when I retire. And I think that's what we need to be looking at. We always hear the three-legged stool thing. If you just have Social Security, all of us have, probably have parents, grandparents now that are scraping by, scraping. One of the statements here talks about Social Security remains the bedrock of retirement. Have you ever stood on bedrock with bare feet? It's not very comfortable. So we probably know people that are maintaining just the bare necessities of life on Social Security. And then the county has a defined benefit plan. Once you reach now five years of employment with the county, you will be able to receive some type of retirement. If you're not real bright, you'll pull it out all at once. If you're smart, you'll take it on a monthly basis. And the third leg of that stool, have you ever sat on a two-legged stool? It's kind of wobbly. That third leg of that stool is what you do for yourself. And it amazes me at how many times, the third-legged stool thing in here reading your point. So it amazes me how many people I talk to who are employees of the county who say, you know what, I'm going to have my Social Security and my Defined Benefit Plan, so I know I'm going to do really well. And I ask them, well, what about what you're putting away? What are you putting away for yourself? I don't need to worry about that. I have Social Security and I have the county's plan. And we know, folks, that it doesn't work very well. So I'd love to, when I saw the proclamation today, I thought I've got to do this one because I still feel that whatever, you know, you get at retirement is going to be what you worked for and what you put away. So I would encourage folks to not just depend on what, and I'm going to call us Uncle Sam, what Uncle Sam says we're going to give you, but you need to provide for yourself as well. So we'd like to, as a full board, we've all signed the proclamation, declare October 19th through 25th as National Save for Retirement Week in Tulare County. I want to read the last couple of these. Whereas Tulare County employees have many retiring or retirement savings options and can focus on saving for their own retirement. And whereas all employees can benefit from increased awareness of the need to save for retirement and the availability of tax-advantaged retirement savings vehicles to assist them in saving for retirement. Now therefore be it resolved, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of October 19th through 25th, 2014, as National Save for Retirement Week in Tulare County. And all of us encourage you to save for your own retirement.
And Mr. Chair, while you're working your way back up here, I'll add to the infomercials that have been made throughout this morning's presentation, and my comment is it's never too early to start saving for retirement, and retirement sure seems a hell of a lot closer once you turn thirties. With that, I know that this is an action item. I will move for approval of this item.
Second. Moved by Vanderpool and seconded by Ennis. We have the both ends, the bookmarks here of the board, youngest and oldest, and the vote is unanimous. We'll now move on to our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on today's agenda but under the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors, if you'd like to step forward, state your name and address for the record. We'll limit public comment to three minutes per person. Anybody wishing to address the board during public comment period? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent calendar. We will pull items seventeen and eighteen that will be considered directly after our public hearing on item number six. Are there any other consent items that the board wishes to pull and consider with separate consideration?
Ding, then I would move for approval of balance of consent calendar.
You have a motion by Ennis.
Second.
Seconded by Worthley. Please cast your votes. A consent calendar is unanimous, less items seventeen and eighteen, which will be heard after item six. We will now take up our first public hearing, which is item number six. Request from Resource Management Agency to find that public noticing the proposed adjustment to the service area boundary of the Traver Zone of Benefit in County Service Area Number One has occurred pursuant to Government Code Section 25 to 17. Mr. Bond.
Pardon me? Mr. Chair, Board, CAO, County Counsel, good morning. Mike Bond, RMA Public Works. The matter before you is a public hearing to adjust the boundary for the Traver Zone of Benefit. And this, a little background, this zone was originally formed by the board in February of 1989. It was subsequently adjusted, the boundary was adjusted in November of 1993. Last September of 2013, your board authorized RMA to have the Traver Sewer and Wastewater Treatment Study updated, which has been done. And subsequently, in October of 2013, a will-serv letter was issued to Self-Help Enterprises for this proposed eleven-lot subdivision. This map shows the boundary of the Zone of Benefit, and you can see this area, which is the area to be added to that zone. It's approximately a little over two acres, 2.1 acres, to support the proposed eleven lots. You'll also notice that Traver Elementary School is right adjacent to this project. This is a little more detailed look at the proposed subdivision. It fronts on Jacobs Drive and at the corner of Canal Drive. Again, the elementary school would be immediately to the east of Canal. I might add that the Safe Routes to the School project was recently completed. It was actually done in two parts. Air Force, our forces at the county completed the improvements from Merritt up to the school up to Jacobs, which is feedback signs, a pushped system for crossing, school crossing, and paving up to Jacobs. And the other project was a Safe Routes to the School project as well for the bus turnout, which was also completed. It looks very, very good, all the way up to Avenue 368. And then your board also approved stop signs. So we now have stop signs at Jacobs Drive and at 368. The notice was done in accordance with the requirements. Mail was sent to all of the parcels in the zone and published, and the notice was posted. And the requirement that no more than fifty percent of the registered voters within the zone object to this project is also a requirement, and staff did not receive any objections at all, either by phone call or writing. And if I may, I'd like to summarize the staff's request to the board for this, which is number one, to find that the public notice was done in accordance with the requirements; and number two, to conduct this public hearing; and three, determine that less than fifty percent of the one hundred and thirty-one registered voters did not object; and four, I'll read this explicitly, to approve an adjustment to the service boundary for the Traver Zone of Benefit as described in Attachment A in your packet, which is the proposed service area legal description; and in Attachment B in your packet is the proposed service boundary map; and number five, to authorize the Traver wastewater treatment facility to serve the proposed eleven lots. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? One quick question. I'm looking at the eleven lots. At the end of number eleven, I see a ponding basin, so am I going to assume correctly that we have curb, gutter, sidewalk?
You do.
Wonderful.
And that parcel, it would be the drainage basin to serve the, which you'll hear in another agenda item today.
Great. Any other questions?
Just a quick comment, a little bit on the history of this project. The reason why, you might wonder why eleven lots, and the reason for the size of this particular venture is the absence of capacity and the sewer capacity at the wastewater treatment facility. I know that the property owner immediately adjacent to this, the forty-four acres, is very anxious as Traver does its general plan, changing its community plan, to incorporate that acreage into the community. And, you know, with some of the financing that we're going to be receiving, that we just received the grant funding for, hopefully that's going to enable us to be able to accommodate additional growth in this community, but it's been constrained by the amount of capacity in our sewer farm. And so that's the reason for this little eleven, you know, unit project. Otherwise, it would probably be a much larger project. But I want to thank the staff for working hard to get this to this point and move it forward. I know Self-Help has been a good partner with us in this, and it'll be a great project for the community, and it'll be very helpful for the school district to maintain their ADA.
Thank you.
Okay, so you know their questions? We'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this matter, please step forward and state your name and address the record. You can use either microphone, they both work.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Betim McGovern-Garcia. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Self-Help Enterprises. We're excited to be before you this morning and moving this project forward. As Mr. Bond mentioned, the project is eleven units of mutual self-help housing in the community of Traver. It's just west of the school, so it's got great community connectivity, and we're excited about the opportunity to work with you to expand the sewer and continue to improve the neighborhood. I'd like to thank you for your ongoing collaboration, and I'd like to thank staff for their willingness to work with us on this project and moving it forward with the entitlements. A recent study conducted by four state agencies found that affordable housing can improve educational outcomes, increase health and well-being, boost economic activity, lower social service costs for state and local governments, and other benefits. We're excited to bring the benefits of affordable home ownership to the community of Traver, and we look forward to continuing our longstanding partnership with the county. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring them back to the board for action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we do items one, two, three, four, and five. We've already done the public hearing, but to make the determinations, approve the adjustment, and authorize the providing of services. And then also, with my motion, I would also then move to approve items seventeen and eighteen on our consent calendar.
A motion by Worthley. Seconded by Ashida. Cast your votes. It's unanimous. Items are public hearing, item number six, and consent calendar, items seventeen and eighteen have been approved. We'll now move to our second public hearing of the day, item number seven, is a request from Resource Management Agency to certify the board has reviewed and considered the information contained in the Environmental Impact Report prepared for General Plan Amendment Number GPA 09003. And then another page and a half of definition. I'll leave that up to you, Aaron.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. Chairman Cox, Supervisors, Chief Administrative Officer, Counsel. I am Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. And before you today is the General Plan Amendment, GPA 09-003, change of zone, PZ 09-004, and a special use permit, PSP 10-062, which was actually approved by the Planning Commission, and all of this includes an Environmental Impact Report. The applicant is Art Peña, and Peña's disposal, and they are here today to answer any questions in case you have them. The requests today are to hold a public hearing in regards to GPA 09-003 and PZ 09-004. Certify the Environmental Impact Report for the project as a whole. Approve General Plan Amendment, GPA 09-003. Approve zone change, PZ 09-004. And as noted previously, the use permit was approved by the Planning Commission in August of 2014. By way of background, Peña's disposal began operating in 1949. You could see throughout the nineties, there was a myriad of entitlements that ultimately culminated in environmental documents being prepared through the early 2000s. The general plan initiation for this project was started in 2008 under GPI 06-004. The Planning Commission recommended that the board adopt GPA 09-003 in 2011. In May of 2011, the Board of Supervisors referred this project back to staff. In October of 2012, the staff sent out notice of preparation for the Environmental Impact Report, and in August of 2014, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this project and for the environmental document for the combined project. Peña's disposal is located at the northeast corner of Avenue 208 and Road 120 near the community of Cutler. It is within the Cutler-Arosi Urban Development Boundary and within the sphere of influence of the Cutler Public Utility District. The general plan initiation for the project was approved by the board in March of 2008. Applicant asked the board to also approve today the addition of the .6-acre drainage basin to the north. You can see the little square there. It is owned by the family and has additionally been approved for the lot lines that are also noted in that northern basin area. It has an easement, and will be through the non-renewal process. It has an easement, and will be through the non-renewal process in 2015 for the Act Preserve. The Planning Commission reviewed the project as a whole on August 27th and recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve the general plan amendment to change the land use designation of the western 11.3 acres from industrial reserve to industrial, and the eastern 6.77 acres of the industrial reserve, sorry, industrial reserve to industrial. Planning Commission also recommended that the board approve and certify the environmental impact report for the project as a whole. And that's the land use plan. The zoning map shows that the existing zoning is AE 20. The applicant requests a change to zone to M1. M1 zone allows recycling transfer facilities by right. Use permits, this thing's moving on its own, use permits are needed in either zone for solid waste disposal. The Planning Commission reviewed the project as a whole on August 27th and recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve zone change PZ 09-004. This site plan shows that what the Planning Commission approved was expansion of existing uses on the site to include service expansion from 500 tons per day to 2,000 tons per day. Conversion of recycled only household hazardous waste collection to a permanent household collective facility. Expansion of an existing mixed construction and demolition debris processing facility. Expansion of existing inert processing facility. Expansion of existing organic processing facility for green waste. Co-collected green waste and food material from residential sources and wood waste. A new biomass gasification unit that uses processed clean wood waste to generate energy. And a new compressed natural grass CNG station. Other project elements include connection to the Cutler Public Utility District for potable water, new septic and leach field, recycling buyback center, administrative offices, and community meeting room, including a new employee trailer, and a community education recycling center. And expanded hours of operation. This aerial photo shows the underutilized area to the eastern side of the property that will require your approval today to expand operations on to. The environmental impact report. The project is anticipated to result in a significant and unavoidable cumulative impact to the noise resource. As such, the cumulative impact from the project may have the potential to adversely impact nearby humans and result in a mandatory finding of significance. All other impacts have been found to be less than significant or have been mitigated to a level of significance less than significant. Specifically, the environmental noise assessment anticipates that traffic-related noise in 2035 is above the 60 dBA within the studied road segments. In 2035, two segments along Avenue 408 and SR 63 would have noise increments of 1.5 dBA. It is generally not feasible to mitigate traffic noise exposure at widely spaced residential uses. Effective sound walls would create property access problems, and is not considered to be feasible to increase the setbacks of existing homes from the roadway. Off-site traffic noise exposure will, at full build of the project, would therefore remain a significant and unavoidable impact along Avenue 408 and SR 63. Based on the information contained in the draft EIR and supporting conclusions contained in studies and other reference information, it is RMA's conclusion that the public benefits of the project outweigh the negligible noise impact to the environment. The benefits include greenhouse gas emission reduction, diversion of solid waste to the landfill, reduced vehicle miles traveled by heavy vehicles resulting in less impacts to air quality, and physical strain on county roadways, and of course, increased employment. Additional mitigation measures in the environmental impact report include the dust control. There's air district permits for stationary sources. There was one change to mitigation measure 3 dash, 3 dot 3 dash 2, resulting in condition of approval 4B, that all replacement stationary off-road equipment shall be electric powered or shall use other technologies that do not rely on direct fossil fuel consumption to the extent that technology is readily available and feasible. As part of our environmental review, other mitigation measures included hazardous waste plan revisions, and then the authorization for permanent household waste collection facility. As part of Environmental Health Services Division and Local Enforcement Agency comments, odor impact minimization plan is required to reduce, to minimize smells, and included in this from HHSA was a comment that they include nontoxic enzyme to be sprayed on organic green material and food material to further reduce odors. As stated, the off-site rose, road requirements mitigation was infeasible, but onsite mitigations require warehouses stores to be rolled down during nighttime operations. And then for transportation or traffic impacts, the mitigation measures included eastbound turn lane on Avenue 408 when determined necessary by County Public Works, and a fair share cost of traffic signal at SR 201 and SR 63 when determined necessary by Caltrans. There was previous comments made into the records in regards to civil rights and fair housing. A thorough analysis that's found in the land use section of the environmental impact report referencing the general plan guidelines of 2003, found that there was no significant impacts based on civil rights and/or fair housing, and that Cutler-Arosi has abundant vacant developable land for residences. And again, the benefits of the project include new jobs for local residents, local businesses, and that this project will divert, recycle, and reuse, and implement the general plan Notice. The environmental document, documents, through the notice of preparation for the proposed project was circulated for review and comment for 30 days between October 2nd, 2012 and October 31st, 2012. A scoping meeting was duly noticed and held on October 30th, 2012. No comments were received during this meeting. The draft EIR was submitted to the State Clearing House for 45-day review and all the agencies. Written comments were received from CalRecycle, San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District, and the Talaray County Department of Health and Human Services. Oral comments were received by phone by three individuals, three county residents. A public notice for the Planning Commission hearing was published in the Times Delta on October, on August 14th, and was mailed again to owners of property within one mile of the site for our general plan. And we received one phone call from the Catholic Diocese, who were doing their due diligence but had no real comments. Again, a 10-day public notice was published and mailed to the property owners within one mile of the site on September 23rd, 2014, before this Board of Supervisors' hearing for the zone change and general plan amendments, and no comments have been received to date. Therefore, our recommended motion is to certify the environmental impact report for the project as a whole. Approve general plan amendment GPA 09-003 to amend the Cutler-Arosi land use plan, and approve zone change PZ 09-004. And that concludes staff presentations. I am here if you have any questions, as is Art Peña.
And his consultant. And thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
So I just wanted to have a comment, maybe ask Art. How many jobs, Art, do you figure this move is going to, by expanding, what it's going to do?
I'm sorry, the question was how many jobs will we create? We're estimating between 20 and 30 jobs potentially by, by buildout, 2035. Yeah, we're currently playing about 85.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this issue, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Going, going, gone, seeing none, we will bring it back to the board for a highly anticipated, much weighted for action.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to make that comment. I really appreciate, you know, I know the applicant's been at this process for some time, and, and I appreciate our staff getting it over the finish line, and this is a, this is a great project for the immediate community, but also has some benefits for our entire county as we look at the issues with our landfill and, and the prominent role that this company plays in dealing with those issues. So I'm, I'm very happy to make the motion to certify the environmental impact report, approve the general plan amendment, and approve the zone change.
That's got to be a record for the time that they've waited since 1949. That's a long time to wait for the full buildout.
With Gabe's back there.
Because of RMA. So that's a, something for Mike Spotted to correct, right, Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second the motion, but I have a comment to staff. Looking at this existing zoning map of that area, it appears to me there may be other properties that should be rezoned that is consistent with the area. So if our staff would look, look at that.
Yes, we can look at that. We are slated to do the Cutler-Arosi community plan update as part of our update process. So yes, that'll definitely be on the radar for us.
If I might just make a quick comment to that. The property immediately to the west of there, which is zoned ag, is actually a walnut processing plant, so it does fit within the zoning that it is, but it is, it is more of a commercial, industrial type of facility. And then immediately to the south of it is Wawona, and that has been zoned to M1, but that does also is a, is a fruit processing type of facility, which could still exist within an agriculturally zoned property.
Okay, we have a motion by Worthley and a second by Ashida. Please cast your votes, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you again, staff, and congratulations to the Peñas. We know you've been at this quite a long time, and we're excited to see this move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, our last item today on today's open agenda is a presentation, number 19, given by our Talaray County librarian regarding fiscal year 1314 accomplishments. Mr. Scott.
All right. Thank you, Board. I'm Jeff Scott, county librarian, and I'm here to present the 2013, 2014 annual report. So the Talaray County Library serves, has 15 branches, serves 16 communities throughout Talaray County, north to Dinuba and Three Rivers, south to Early Mart and Alpa. We have a strong adult literacy program going on right now. I'll talk a little bit about that first. We just celebrated 30 years of adult literacy in California. There was a proclamation by the governor for September, declaring September Adult Literacy Awareness Month. As you know, the board declared Talaray County Adult Literacy Awareness Month in April, so it's great to see so much support for literacy. Sue Gillisons is our literacy coordinator based in Visalia. Kim Torres is our literacy coordinator based in Talaray. In the past year, we've taken over the program in Talaray, and Kim Torres has done a heroic effort in restarting that program and getting things going. I'd also like to thank Supervisor Cox to go, from going to our celebration last week. I had Lick Your Little Cake. Downtown Place made a nice cake with the symbol of the California Library Literacy Services. So lots of talent here in Visalia for cake making. Youth services, we provide programs every week. There's a storytime craft and programs for the children. As you can see, we always like to have pictures of smiling children in our presentations. So they're very proud. They're always very proud of the craft that they do. Once a month when we do our, our monthly report, I make sure that the branch staff take pictures of the kids doing the craft, and they're always very proud to show the craft that they're doing. And I think it really shows the work that the library staff do, and how they serve the community, and how they're perceived. We spread joy to the children every week, and they really enjoy it, and that's thanks to the county and support of the library. So of our various locations, we renovated in the past five years, Early Mart, Ivanhoe, Lindsay, Arosi, Visalia, Woodlake, Exeter's plan for renovation next year. We're going to start off the fundraiser at the end of the, the year. We recently had a program out for the Exeter Fall Festival this past Saturday, where our new friends of Exeter Library went out and provided some of the layout of the new Exeter Library. We're going to start having some community meetings, get some feedback from them, to see where they'd like to see our services, and where the Exeter Library go, and comment on the proposed renovations there, and get the ball rolling on fundraising. Strathmore right now is undergoing renovation, so we're looking at having that reopen either mid-December, and probably have a grand reopening celebration in January, February. We also have some exciting news as well. We have potential new branches opening up. After probably over 10 years, we're looking at reopening the Farmersville Library. We've been speaking with city staff, and Judy Hill, our head of branches, has gone out to the Farmersville Library that's based in the Boys and Girls Club that was created a few years ago. The library is set up. We've made arrangements with the shelving. We need the accession to books and do some other things with that to get it ready. We have hired the staff to operate that facility, so we're ready to go for Farmersville. London is still undergoing. We're looking at property right now to try to get that going. That's been a really great effort by Robert Escaredo, getting a lot of attention for that. So that's a very exciting project. That will be our first new branch since I can remember, so it's in recent memory. We're also working with Pixley, possibly moving the library out of the school. That's probably later in 2015, we're going to revisit that. As a result of some of these new branches, we may be doing an hours change starting in January, and then of course, come back to the board with any proposed hours change, just to help with making more efficient hours, more efficient use of our time, to make sure we're open the hours that people need us. We also have several book machine projects that we've unveiled. Just this last year, we have the book machine in East Porterville, which we got a lot of local press attention for. Got a little spot in the local news, headline 4:00 p.m. news, so it's always exciting when projects that you do are featured prominently on the local medium. We also have strong online resources. We have the Talaray County Library Foundation, and private donors donate almost $100,000 a year to support our ebook collection, which means we're probably the largest, one of the largest ebook collections in the Central Valley with over 32,000 titles. So services like Overdrive. If you can't come into the library and you like ebooks, you can go to our website, talaraycountylibrary.org, click on the downloadables, click on Overdrive, and you can go onto the website and download ebooks. One of the interesting trends with ebooks in the market today is that the library, your local library has the only Big Five publishers available. So if you look at online services like Amazon or Oyster that provide ebook services, Talaray County Library actually provides only one that has Big Five, so Hachette, Harper Collins, Simon &amp; Schuster, publishers like that, we're the only entity that can provide an ebook for you if you're interested in that. So it's one of the things we're really innovative with, and really cutting edge for that kind of service. Of course, the Visalia Library has wireless internet. We're looking to roll that out. And the other branches, we've just doubled the bandwidth in Visalia, Exeter, Three Rivers, Lindsay, and Dinuba, and we've seen increased usage there because of that. So we're looking to bring wireless internet after that. Won a couple of awards this year. California State Association of Counties awarded us the Challenge in Merit Awards for our teen program or digital media lab that we have, as well as our book machine program in your library in more places. We also provide ongoing computer classes and assistance for those, you know, looking at ebooks, looking at e-readers, or just need to learn to use at a computer. So major accomplishments, we established the book machine in East Porterville. I renovated the Woodlake Library. We're renovating the Strathmore Library now. We're getting plans going to renovate the Exeter Library. We, the, two grants were awarded this year, the Best Buy Community Grant, and you're at Talaray County, both grants, one from the California State Library, the other from Best Buy. And so all totaled about $25,000 in grants to provide services to teens in Talaray County. So we're going branch by branch to provide advanced teen services, essentially expanding our teen digital media lab out to Dinuba, Exeter, Three Rivers, Lindsay, and Dinuba. We're also changing because of Common Core. We're impacting our GED programs, and now more computer interface has to be required for the tutors to get trained for the test. We've We've doubled the bandwidth in our branches, and we're also created a new exhibit through a compassionate lens, which is photography from the Lanell camp back from the 40s and 50s. It's actually color photography of sort of the Grapes of Wrath time period in honor of the 75th anniversary of the publication of The Grapes of Wrath. So that exhibit's still up, and encourage you to take a look. The color photography is really insightful, lots of pictures of children, and the jalopies that you'd see in the movie, you have in real life in the photography, so it's very fascinating. Let's see that. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
No, no questions, just to comment, I know the Altibus School sure likes that book machine, especially the teachers and always commenting on how fortunate they are to have that.
That's good to see. I know, I remember that when we did the grand opening, that girl that was there, she kept bringing kids back, back and forth, and she was on the news story that evening, and she was just saying how great it was and how excited she was about having that available to her, so. Good to hear.
Just to make a comment, Jeff, while you've been here, you've done a great job in really expanding the presence of the library in the different communities by enhancing individual library sites, by bringing book machines to communities that did not have a library, or to expand the service hours in the communities that do have a library. And I really think it's a very important function that the library plays in these communities, because, you know, typically all the unincorporated communities have is a school, and that's primarily focused on the children, but the real resource that the county can provide for residents to sort of continue their education, or pick themselves up and move themselves forward, is really through the library. And so your presence, the department's presence, and the good work of all the employees that work for the library is so important and such a critical resource that these communities really, really need, because reading, the literacy programs are just so important for all of our population. So appreciate the work you do, and you will be missed, so great job, and please continue for the rest of the time you're here to keep Tulare County Library doing great.
We have a good team and great staff, so we're going to, we're going to be in good shape going on, so, but thank you Supervisor.
Great. Well, I wanted to say a personal thanks to you, Jeff. The London Project is something which you recognized early on. Robert Ischardo, who is a teach, public teacher who grew up in London, had this vision for creating a community library in London, and that's, that's a wonderful concept, but you recognize early on the difficulty, you know, you can sometimes get something started, but how do you sustain it? And you recognize that, and really, to guarantee sustainability, it really needs to be a part of the umbrella of the Tulare County Board, Tulare County Library system. So you stepped forward and said, you know, we will do this, we will step forward as a county, and within my budgetary constraints, we will, we will have a new project, a new library for London. And for those of people who don't know about London, London is one of our larger unincorporated communities, and it really has zero in terms of, there's no, there's no school there, there's no library there, there's no, we have, we have no county presence there. At one point, we used to have a fire department there years ago, but there is really, there is very little in that community. My hat's off to, there is a program that the Proteus has maintained for years there of a youth program and a facility, but for that, there really is not much in that community for these, for these folks. And so this is a huge step forward, and I am, I'm so excited about it, and I really appreciate your leadership in stepping forward and saying, we will do this. And I know we'll get it done, we've got a couple of options, we're working on real estate issues right now, but this is going to be done. The facility's already been acquired from the Dine Public Schools remodeling project and waiting a place to go. And I too want to say thank you for your effort while you were here as our librarian, wish you well in your new, new job. We're sorry to see you go, but Mr., you know, Rousseau has this record of all these people, these department heads that are, that have come and gone since he's been here, and you're just adding to this list, so. But, but thank you very much, Jeff, and appreciate very much what you, what you've done and what you are doing.
I'll add to my comments. What I've appreciated is fixing some of these libraries that I would call historic and now they're modern. So thank you for, you know, going in and spending the funds, doing the right thing and bringing some of these libraries up to, up to speed. So thank you, and we wish you well.
Thank you.
Historic's not always a bad thing, right, Mr. Ennis?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Less the roof leaks. Okay, with that, we, that concludes our open session items. Counsel, I'm looking down there at Mr. Sims, we're glad to have you sitting here today. Appreciate your presence, and we have need for closed session, I assume?
Yes, there's several closed session schedules, items A, B, C, D, H, I, J, and K.
We're going to turn to closed session, and we do not have any anticipated announcements, correct?
No. Had to write my script down.